Good evening. I'm Mayor Mark Northrup. I'd like to call the Hudsonville City Commission Session to Order. This is June 14th, 2022. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bolheys?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
DeVray?
Here.
Groth?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here. Now is a moment of silence for some personal reflection. I think we're all pretty excited about the summer and Memorial Day behind us and Veterans Day in front of us, so take a few moments before we go into public comments. Thank you. Public comments, I know we have at least two guests here that are running for elected office. Joe, did you want to step up and speak to us real quickly? State what you're running for and share your thoughts.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you. I'm Joe Moss. I'm running for County Commissioner, District Five, which includes Blendon and Jamestown Townships, city of Hudsonville, and a little piece of Zealand. And I grew up in Hudsonville, never planned to run for office, but got involved over the last couple of years in the community in a more of political sense. Launched a group called Ottawa Impact and started organizing and advocating for parental rights, individual freedoms, American values. And I'm running for office because about, it was about a year and a half ago now, I guess, Ottawa County closed my daughter's Christian school, threatened all the parents with possible fines and jail time because not every kid wore a mask at school. School closed for a couple of weeks, reopened, we never compromised our convictions or changed our policies. But it really woke me up, got me involved. So I'm just a dad and a business owner and I'd really like to see individual rights prioritized in Ottawa County more than they have been, and so that's why I'm involved. So it's nice to be here. When we're done, I guess I'll go brave the boiling heat and do some more door knocking. If you'd like to talk afterwards, I'd be happy to meet. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. It's just nice to see somebody running for the County Commission's Office or anybody from the county come to a City Commissioner. I've been sitting up here for 10 years and we've never had a County Commissioner visit a City Commission meeting and give us an update. So if you are our Commissioner, it'd be nice to see you come by every few months, just say hi and give us a brief because we need to be better connected with our county.
Yep. I've seen that trend across the board and I look forward to the opportunity. Thank you.
I believe there's somebody running for County Prosecutor. Is that...
Not prosecutor, Judge.
Judge, okay.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor, council members, my name is Paul Kraus and I'm our Senior Assistant Prosecuting Attorney for Ottawa County, so it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I don't know if you heard the good news, but because of the population growth that we've had in Ottawa County, we have been awarded a new Circuit Court Judge seat for Ottawa County. So currently, we have four Circuit Court Judges and now we will have five that will be on the November ballot. It's a countywide position and the position is going to be a family law position that handles our abuse and neglect cases, our divorce and custody cases, guardianship and adoption cases, which is a really good fit with my background. I've spent 17 years as an attorney, the first nine of which were as an Assistant Attorney General where I handled child protection cases. From there, we moved to the city of Holland where my wife became a professor at Hope College and I joined Cunningham-Galman Law Firm where I had a family law practice and was Deputy City Attorney for the city of Holland. It was in that capacity that I helped people on their best day when they were adopting a child and on their worst day when they were going through a divorce or had a custody issue. I received a phone call one day from Lee Fisher, who's now our prosecutor. At the time, he was the Chief Deputy under Ron France, who invited me to join the Prosecutor's Office because we had growing child abuse cases in Ottawa County and they were looking for somebody that had experience in dealing with those cases. And so I didn't apply, I was very humbling, but thought about it and then decided to go back into child protection. So for six, five and a half going on, six years, I've been with the Prosecutor's Office. I serve on our child death review team for Ottawa County. I, myself and a team of professionals, review every child death in Ottawa County that is not natural causes to see if something could be done differently in our county to prevent another similar death from happening again. And then this particular position was created that has many of those same areas that I practiced for 17 years. So I put my hat and my name in into the race. I've been endorsed by the Sheriff, endorsed by a prosecutor, Judge Jonas, many community leaders, including a child protection community, Darcy Fluharty at our Children's Advocacy Center. I look forward to putting my skills to use for the county and I'd love to come back as a sitting judge and give a judge's report if you would have me back if I'm lucky enough to be elected. But it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I've already been doing some door knocking here in Hudsonville, did some tonight, and a suit jacket, probably not the best idea, but did it. And I look forward to the race. I would love to leave a brochure with everybody that just has my full background if that would be permissible, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks for throwing your hat in the ring and being part of the American process. It's a big deal.
Thank you so much. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say it's Flag Day today, so I just wanted to thank all the service men and women that are here today. Thank you for their service.
Well, Mr. Kraus is handing those out. Is there anybody else in the public that chooses to address the Commission tonight? Hearing and seeing no other persons from the public choosing to address the Commission, we will move on to the Consent Agenda Items. There are four: Minutes of City Commission Work Session dated May 10th, Minutes of City Commission Regular Session dated May 10th, Minutes of the Personnel Committee Meeting dated May 17th, and Minutes of the Planning Commission Regular Session dated May 18th. Are there any changes to those minutes? I will ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, items two through five. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? We can do this on a voice count. All those in favor approving the minutes as identified in the Consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those in disfavor, say same. The minutes the Consent Agenda items carry. I did like to note a couple of things. On the Personnel Committee Item Number Four, there are five bullet points that address a discussion as to a full-time fire chief. I have those added in after the fact, but if the vote on the budget tonight directly reflects those five bullet points that discuss the rationale for the Personnel Committee supporting a full-time fire chief. So if you had a chance, you might want to take a quick glance at that. Also, on Item Number Five, the Minutes of the Planning Commission, there is a major hotel that will be approved in a final, is it a PUD?
Yes.
It's a final PUD for Home to Hilton that we have been working on for, gosh, quite a while. And it's a huge addition knowing we're getting a kind of a high-end hotel in the city limits of Hudsonville. So if you get a chance, you might want to take a look at that PUD that's been approved by the Planning Commission. And their final vote will be next week on that one. Yeah, next Wednesday.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got moved back a week.
We are now moving on to New Business Public Safety. I would ask that the Chief approach the DIAS and give his report, please.
Good evening. Month of May was a busy month. We had 61 calls for service, the majority of those being medicals again, but there were a few calls of note that I put in the report. We had three fires and that's a big month for us to have three fires in one month. They were all fairly small in nature. One was an event fan. We had another one in some exhaust duct work. And then we did have one structural fire in presidential states. So we did assist Georgetown also on a rollover accident up on the expressway where we helped extricate a driver from a vehicle that had gone down into the ravine. And then we also manned our station for a few hours while multiple departments were out at the Blendon Pines Fire. We didn't respond to the call, but we did man our station to cover Georgetown and Jamestown area. We had a busy month with retirement parties. As you know, the former fire chief retired and also one of our firefighters, Dick Van Emmer retired. And we were busy with PR as well. We did a couple of events with kids. May 19th, we were at the ECC Building of Hudsonville. And then on May 25th, we had South Elementary here as well. And then looking forward, we're working on a software program that's going to help us enhance our training and keeping of our records. So we have just purchased that and we're getting that set up as we speak. So that'll take us a few weeks, maybe even a few months to get that going. Any questions on the first five items?
I have one question, Steve. The driver of the vehicle I rolled over, is he okay? He or she?
She is okay. Yep. She was actually transported to Metro and last report was she was fine.
Anything else?
I do have one more thing. If there's no other questions on the first five, we have a promotion within our department and I would like to call up Fire Cadet Chad Cunnion. Chad has been with our department for just about a year now. Last fall, he went through medical first responder training and passed that. And then starting in January, he went to the Ottawa County Fire Academy and completed that now. And that was every Tuesday and Thursday night and occasionally a Saturday as well. So that is a time commitment right there. Last week's Saturday, he passed that. So tonight, we are going to honor that and we are going to promote him from Fire Cadet to Firefighter. So I have then Chad's badge. And this is when the firefighters get their badges, is when they go from the cadet to the firefighter level. So Chad, on behalf of the city, we now promote you to Firefighter. Congratulations.
Chad, thank you. We need, we need young blood like you that's willing to step up and lead us into the next, next evolution of a city. It's a big deal and we've all been in your shoes at some point in our lives and it's just, it's neat. It warms our heart. And your city is very proud of you and we look forward to you serving us a long time. Moving to the Sheriff's Department. Sergeant?
Good evening, everybody. The Fire Department had a lot of calls and we did as well. It's that time of the year where we're taking a whole lot more calls. We are at 246 calls for service this month, or last month. And the big note is traffic again. Got to commend our guys, 207 traffic stops last month. They are rocking it. They are doing everything they can to slow people down. We have more traffic than I've ever seen in this city and I think we're going to have a couple more years of that, if not more. So they're doing a really good job. Couple of our deputies went through crime-free multi-housing training this month. We were supposed to have one of the employees from the city here, but due to some scheduling issues, it did not work out. But that's the, that's the program that we're going to start implementing with all of our rental facilities. It's basically designed to keep the crime out of our apartments and everything else, as well as the trailer park. So it's going to be fantastic. We had a lot of our managers go through, so it's going to help our community. I was able to teach craze to the rest of the library staff. A couple of you guys were there as well. So at this point, we've gotten all of our employees through it, with the exception of anybody that's been added in the last year. So other than that, things are going great. It's hot and we'll keep working.
Any questions for the Sergeant?
No, I'd just like to say I was one of those that attended the craze training and it's a very tough subject, but you did an excellent job and really appreciate the knowledge and the information that is gained. It's not something we ever want to have happen, but being ready and prepared for it is what we're required to do. So thank you.
Jack and I spent about two hours afterwards debriefing each other because you had quite an impact on us.
Well, that's good, I guess.
Dave?
Okay, things are getting a little busier for my department as well. We went from very little going on in the first part of the year to, we went to five different events in, in May. The B2 Walkathon, that was the first time we did something like that. And we didn't close the route for them because the Wooner is a mixed-use roadway. We, what we did is we just provided assistance at the intersections, right, to make sure that they had safe, safe crossings. And it seemed to go very well. Pronggo Flea Market, as I mentioned before, we've not really had much traffic control to do for that event for the past few years. So this year, we didn't put anybody out there. JJ and I just kind of alternated driving through the area. That worked out just fine. There were no problems with us not actually having a presence out there. So I think that'll be our model for the events to come for, for the flea market. And the other three things are just where we went out into other parts of the county, just to help out other communities, keep our skills sharp, learn a few things, and just kind of give back to the county because the county does provide us with, with training and things like that. Any comments or questions?
As always, Dave, we're just very pleased with your performance and your staff and the value you bring to the community. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And if there are no, if there's nothing else from me, if you don't have any questions about my budget, it's my wife's birthday, so I'm going to head back home and be there.
Happy wife, happy life. Thanks, Dave.
You guys have a good night.
I'd like to move on to Traffic Control Order. Is there a motion to approve that temporary traffic order, please?
I'll make the motion to approve Temporary Traffic Control Order Number 22-02 for closure of Harvey Street Wooner from School Avenue to Plaza Avenue on July 7, 14, 21, and 28 from 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for happenings on Harvey.
Second motion.
It's been moved and supported. This has been signed off by our Sergeant, Justin Anga. I don't know Jeff. This is kind of boilerplate now.
This is just for, yeah, just for Harvey Street.
Yeah. Nothing special. Nothing we haven't done already. Very good. Any other discussion from the Commission? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Clerk.
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bolheys?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to Finance. Item Number Eight, City Treasurer's Monthly Report for April 2022.
Yeah, so we'll start with the General Fund Summary for April. The first report, I just want to point out, we're at 128% of our budgeted revenues and at 78.47 of our budgeted expenditures. In the revenue summary graph, you can see that we brought in a little bit over $300,000 for the month of April. $187,000 of that was from state revenue sharing. In the revenue to date, that brings us to a little bit over $5.4 million in revenues for the general fund. And the expenditure summary, we went ahead and expensed $187,655 in April, bringing our year-to-date to a little bit over $3.5 million. Questions on those reports? Okay, so we'll move on to the Investment Report for April. At the very top, you can see that we had a CD from Lake Michigan Credit Union mature that was at a rate of .65. I did renew it, but I didn't renew it until May and we had a little bit better rates now that they're starting to increase. So I'm hoping all of these start turning into close to 2%. But for the month of April, we averaged a 1.41 average rate of return and brought in a little bit over $3,900 in investment revenue. Questions on that?
Thank you. You do a fine job, as always. Any questions for the Treasurer from the Commission? Hearing none. We'll move on to Payment of the Bills. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $436,019.64 and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and supported in a discussion. So we have one more month for the year. Is that right?
Yep. So we'll have all of June's and then even into August, we'll have some bills that we'll have to accrue back to the fiscal year. So you'll still see some, you know, current year activity in the next few months.
Motion on the table. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Bolheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to ACH Funds Distribution. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the funds distributed via Automated Clearinghouse in the amount of $91,370.79, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the City Manager.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Bolheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to Budget Adjustments, Items 43 to 57. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to adopt the 2021-2022 Budget Adjustments, 43 through 57, as drafted.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion from the City Commissioners? I looked at this pretty closely, Patrick. You know, here again, we do this every year. It's, I think we do it twice here, don't we, usually?
At least twice. Sometimes we're early, but, but there's, I mean, this is just standard adjustments. I mean, you're not going to always be dead nuts for everything on the, on the budget. The only thing that kind of took me back is we had a lot more in attorney fees this year, but that's not a bad thing. It just reflects the fact that we have more consultations required with all the purchasing that we're doing for property in the city. I did wonder, I was going to ask you, Kayla, I didn't have a chance to, did, did that include the lawsuit that we received?
I don't think so.
No, no. All we paid for that was the deductible.
Okay.
So just...
There were additional fees just with Jessica's involvement with the co-op property and a lot of the other projects.
Money well spent. I'm not suggesting otherwise, Jessica.
This is, I mean, Kayla, feel free to jump in. This is the most important of the budget adjustments because it's the last quarter.
Yep.
So we need to get these right because the audit will reflect where we landed at the end of the fiscal year.
Yes, and I've already spoken to department heads. They have a few weeks left and they can be conservative in their spending, but these were just things that needed to get done so that we end the year well.
I'm sure you rule pretty tightly on how they spend the money. So the motions on the floor. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Clerk.
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Bolheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Adjust the budget as the motion says. Moving on to the next item, which is, where am I here? We're at the, number 12, America Rescue Plan. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the use of CSLFR funds to reimburse the Parks Fund for the construction of the Buttermilk Park Pathway in the amount of $433,002.
Second motion.
It's been moved and supported. We've had quite a discussion already at the work session on this. We're kind of, we have to if we want to retain those funds from, for that trail essentially. So this is a fairly large amount, not fully anticipated, but I think we all recognize it's, if we don't do it now, we probably never will. Any discussion from the Commissioners on this? Patrick, do you have anything else to add?
No. We're going to, I'll address these funds a little more in the budget presentation.
Right. Would there be a roll call, please, Clerk?
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bolheys?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to Item Number 13. This is the Public Hearing on the Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year 2022 and 2023, as presented by City Manager Patrick Waterman. Patrick, thank you.
Okay, well, good evening. Every year, you guys tell me to shorten this thing up, so it's down to four hours now.
Yeah, I remember that first one, Patrick. It went a little long.
No. But remember, you guys, you guys know this stuff. We've talked about it, but this is really for the benefit of the public.
It's public. It's my end of hearing.
Therefore, it's a matter of record.
But it's not Grand Rapids where we have all the seats filled either.
Yeah. It's our WCET viewers, right? So it's full transparency.
Yeah.
And we care about that. So formally, I'm here to present this to you tonight in accordance with Section 7.2 of the Charter, which states that the City Manager and the Treasurer shall prepare and complete an itemized proposal for the next fiscal year and shall submit it to the Commission at its regular meeting in the month of May to be adopted at the regular meeting in June, which is tonight. Although the budget was submitted to you at your regular meeting last month, it's being presented to you now as part of the public hearing. So we're going to begin with, let me get this to work. Am I not connecting? We're going to begin with the general overview of the 2022-23 budget. First big update is earlier this year, we adopted a new strategic plan for Hudsonville and that conveys what your, the City Commission's vision is for the city's direction and priorities over the next five years. The new plan establishes three key focus areas and 22 key objectives and dozens of annual tasks, most of which require city funding to accomplish. So as such, the city budget includes many planned expenditures that directly support the three key focus areas of the plan. For example, the budget proposes nearly $312,000 in line item spending for projects and initiatives that further the making Hudsonville a destination focus area. These include road projects associated with the future Village Green, dollars for new wavefinding signage in the city and other economic development initiatives. It allocates $28,000 in spending for projects and initiatives that further the improving infrastructure and city services focus area. This includes focus, our funding efforts that will support the single waste hauler initiative and stormwater maintenance projects, both of which are listed objectives under this focus area. And finally, it includes over $2.4 million in line item spending towards projects and initiatives that will further the third focus area, which is addressing traffic and circulation concerns, which we just heard about from our Sergeant tonight. The vast majority of this spending will be used for large capital infrastructure projects that will help improve traffic flow or expand opportunities for alternative modes of transportation in the city. So every budget always has good news and bad news and they're in the form of negative and positive factors that are affecting the budget. So beginning with the bad news and the negative factors, the city will be making a few large inter-fund transfers from the general fund this year to help cover budget shortfalls, most notable of which will be a $527,000 transfer to the Parks Fund to make it whole. Due to rising inflation, we're expecting to have increased, across-the-board increases on goods and services that the city purchases. Inflation and its effects on the CPI will also drive up personnel and operational costs as well as they are in all cities and most employers. And the threat of a recession is looming. We are all hearing about that, so that will obviously have impacts. Finally, the current labor shortages that we're expecting not only limits our ability as a city to fill open position, it also affects the critical work that the city contracts out. It delays project timelines and increases our costs. A couple of recent examples of this are the Blue House Project on 32nd Avenue. We were talking about that tonight. That's taken much longer for us to complete that and that's primarily due to labor shortages. And the Buttermilk Creek Pathway, which we just talked about, which came in way more than we had expected in cost and materials. Positive factors affecting this year's budget for the fourth consecutive year, our tax values and our tax revenues will be at an all-time high for the city. We're anticipating receiving nearly $110,000 in additional state revenue sharing this year, as well as an additional $92,500 in Act 51 funding. These incre- additional $92,500 in Act Fifty-One funding. These increases can be attributed to the city's population growth, as well as recent jumps in state sales tax. Between the current and upcoming fiscal years, the city will receive nearly $780,000 in coronavirus state and local recovery, or I like to call them Sizzler because it makes me think of a state, but that's what we refer to as Sizzler funds. These funds can be used to reimburse the city coffers for the lost revenues related to COVID and to pay for specific projects and services. Some of these dollars have already been allocated. We just did that a moment ago with the pathway, and we'll have to make a decision on how to utilize the remaining funds in the future. And finally, despite a large inter-fund transfer that I just discussed, the general fund is still expected to end the year with a healthy fund balance of 13.5% of revenues. So the overall direction of the budget is to maintain our current millage rate of 11.2303, but with an eye on future adjustments to that rate, if necessary, due to rising inflation and the possibility of a recession. Staff will begin implementing the many goals and action steps outlined in the new strategic plan. We will begin, continue pursuing our goal of maintaining a general fund cash reserve of at least 20% of revenues, and also begin settling, setting aside dollars for future large capital improvement projects such as the Village Green. We will need to discuss and determine the best use of the approximately $271,000 in remaining Sizzler dollars for future projects. We'll, we'll continue to invest in necessary infrastructure improvements, equipment procurements, and facility upgrades in accordance with our long-range CIP. And finally, we're going to want to narrow our focus on any future trends in the economy that could negatively affect our financial position and take precautionary steps as needed. So that's kind of the overall direction. So fund balance restoration, that's been an ongoing goal. It's, it's the city commission's goal of maintaining an unrestricted fund balance of at least 20% of our average annual revenues. And those are depicted here by the blue bars, which are the fund balance, and the red line, which is that 20% mark. It's, it, it, over the past three years, the city's been successfully maintaining that 20% mark with healthy fund reserves. It's a good goal, and I say this every year, but it's one that's difficult to consistently achieve because revenues can fluctuate greatly from year to year. So that's always a moving target that we're chasing. We had $1.3 million in loans this year for a property acquisition that showed up as act, as a revenue for the city. So that really skewed our, our revenue picture for this year. So that 20% mark went, went way up. So that's something that we're continuing to monitor. The proposed budget, if fully expanded, will see the city fall short of that goal with a year-end projected fund balance of about $796,000 or 13.5%. This dip can be attributed to larger-than-normal expenses and that are projected to decrease our fund balance by about $416,000. However, this decrease in fund balance is temporary, and we expect those reserves to be back up over, at or over the 20% mark within the next three years or so. This pie chart simply demonstrates the city's various sources of revenue in the fund, in the general fund, which are used for the city's general operations. As you can see, property tax accounts for the lion's share at nearly 52%. That's down about 17% from last year's amount due to the increasing percentage of the other revenues category, which now makes up a whopping 24% of the revenue pie this year. Last year, that category was 1%. So just to put that in perspective, the reason it jumped so much is because it includes that 1.4 million that I just mentioned for the, for the proceeds from that loan for the co-op property. So to summarize, the unique factors affecting, property taxes are up nearly $171,000, state revenue sharing is up nearly $110,000, Act Fifty-One is up nearly 93. Sizzler funds totaling 780 will help pad our coffers, and we're getting about 1.3 million in grant funding this year awarded to the city, which is really helping us achieve some of those large capital projects. On the negative side, one-time inter-fund transfers of 306,000 are necessary. The fire department will be making a $185,000 equipment project, but that could be actually cut in half. They've got a pending grant that we're set to hear about, and if, if that grant is successful from FEMA, that would cut that expense in half. The Buttermilk Creek Path costs about $443,000 more than we had anticipated, and employee payroll and benefit costs are up about $189,000. So in terms of property taxes, once again, our tax revenues, they're the primary funding source for all of our operations. We're projecting the property tax revenues to increase by nearly 171 to a little over 3 million. That's the first time we've reached that $3 million mark on property tax revenues. And it's going to be the sixth consecutive year of positive growth in our tax revenues. However, we recognize that this trend cannot continue indefinitely. Eventually, most likely next year, we're going to see property values begin to flatten or even decrease in the city as the real estate market cools off and recession kicks in. So we just need to be prepared for when that happens by, by making smart budget decisions and making sure that we have strong, healthy fund reserves. Revenues from property taxes, as you know, are closely correlated to our total taxable value, or TTV. We pay very close attention to the TTV, which this year is expected to grow by over 18 million to 282.1 million. That's the highest, again, in city history. The positive growth in TTV can be attributed to a very strong real estate market in Hudsonville, which we're all aware of, and that leads to a home's uncapping when it's sold. So when it's sold, it uncaps and gets reevaluated for value, and that increases the TTV. And it's also attributed to all the new construction investments that we've been seeing in the residential, industrial, and commercial markets in our community. I like to dig into this TTV a little more carefully because it's good to show comparatively how we compare to our neighboring cities and villages in Ottawa County, nearby Granville, which is always a good comparable for us. So as you can see, at eighteen point, at eighteen million in new TTV growth, that represents about 6.94% of total growth for the city. And that was the third highest among our peers. And among our smaller peers, like Spring Lake, Cooperstown, and Zeeland, that's, we're ranking first. So, you know, looking at Grand Haven and Holland, which are much larger communities and much larger TTVs, that's, I think that's a good sign of the positive activity that's happening in the city when you see that kind of growth in TTV. So the millage rate, it's directly tied and related to the TTV of the city. One mill is equal to one one-thousandth of each dollar of taxable value. So for example, one mill on a home with a total tax, with a taxable value of $100,000 will generate about a hundred dollars, will generate $100 for the city. And so the city currently levies 11.2303 mills we have since 2006. So that $100,000 home would pay an annual tax bill of $1,123 to the city. Under state law, we have the ability to increase our millage rate to the maximum allowable rate, which is adjusted each year under the Headley Amendment. This year, the Headley maximum, allowable maximum is 16.613 mills. Many Michigan cities that have low TTVs or are struggling with financial distress are forced to levy those maximum amounts. And you'll see that in other communities. Mayor, I'm sure you've talked to other mayors that are in those situations. So we're fortunate that we're well below our, our capped amount. In addition to those mills that we levy for general operations, such as the library, parks, police, fire, public works, and administration, all the properties located within the city's downtown development district also levy an additional mill upon themselves to cover all the operational costs of the DVA. So how do we compare? This is a rate comparison among the cities and villages in Ottawa and again in Granville. So as you can see, we rank fifth lowest among our peers. The townships like to compare their rates to the cities, but that is a very different animal in terms of the services that are provided and, and that, the, the type of administration that's run. So we like to compare to the cities, and we find ourselves comparatively low. Just catch my place here. I think what's important with this, again, and I like to point out, is that far-right column. So more so than the, the millage rate comparison, you look at that current TTV in the far-right column, and that TTV has an effect on what one mill generates. So in Hudsonville, for example, one mill generates about $272,000 a year for us. However, in Zeeland, where their TTV is nearly double that of ours, that same mill generates about $527,000 for them. So even though our communities have similar millage rates, we're at a competitive disadvantage with communities that have larger tax bases and, and lower millage rate. And so that, that comparison provides clear justification for why we desire to maintain property values and grow our tax base. Having a healthy tax base increases our ability to provide quality services and make capital improvements, and while comparatively operating at a low rate. Many communities have been actually able to grow their tax bases, have been able to maintain or even reduce their millage rates. And that's always a goal for us, is when we find that sweet spot of our millage, our mills are generating enough for us to, more than enough for us to continue operations, we can then look at millage rate reductions. Turning now to the city's debt obligations, there are only two remaining debt on the book, debts on the book with a combined outstanding balance of just under 4.3 million. Both debts are paid for out of the general fund, the first and largest of which is the $4.7 million capital improvement bond that the city issued in 2016 for the quality-of-life enhancement projects. Next year, the city will make a principal and interest payment of about $346,000 towards that debt. So that will reduce the principal amount to about 3.98 million. About $34,000 of that payment will be coming from the DDA, who, as you know, agreed to pay 20% of their capture towards that bond obligation every year. So that helps offset the city's general fund contribution towards the principal and interest. The other outstanding debt is the remaining $100,000 balance on the $2.1 million DPW building that we built in 2012. We're going to pay about $24,000 towards that debt. That's scheduled to mature in 2027, but Kayla and I have talked about, it's pretty likely we're going to pay that off within the next five years or sooner at that small of a balance. Finally, it's noted that our current debt obligation amounts are still well below what the state lipos limitations are, which are based on our TTV. So if we were in a position where we wanted to bond or borrow for another capital project, we have capacity to do that. Here's just a summary of the overall revenues. I, I don't expect you all to be able to read this, but in the far-right column, the total expenses at about 16.4 million are projected to exceed revenues at 15.5, 15.2 million. This means that we're going to be utilizing about 1.2 million in cash reserves from various fund balances to balance the budget. However, it's noted that the majority of this shortfall is due to large water and sewer projects, and that, that money is coming out of the water and sewer funds, which, as you know, are very, very healthy. So we are spending money to improve the capital system in, in the city. In terms of other capital projects, we've got about two dozen of them planned. Here's a list of some of them that are earmarked in this proposed budget, and those total over 5.5 million. So quite a lot of investment this year for our budget. Some of the more noteworthy projects are going to include the realignment of Berry Street, which we got a grant to fully cover, the resurfacing and restriping of North Thirty-second and South Balsam to a three-lane configuration, the realignment of Plaza Avenue to accommodate the future Village Green, which is out for bid right now, and the conjut, the construction of the new Buttermilk Creek Pathway. Majority of these projects will be completed in early summer of 2023. In terms of personnel, this is our organizational chart, and again, I don't expect you to, to read that. We have seventy-six city employees that are included in the budget, which is comprised of twenty-three full-time and fifty-three part-time positions. In addition to our employees, it includes payroll for the seven elected commissioners, eight planning commissioners, six zoning board of appeals members, twenty-eight election workers, and three board of review members. It also allocates dollars for the police and assessing personnel, which we contract through Ottawa County. I want to point out just two noteworthy structural changes, though, that are affecting personnel costs. The first is a restructuring of the front counter administrative assistant position, which will now be shared between the finance and public works department. This position was just recently filled with a highly qualified individual named Kate Millsarston. All right, got that. I wasn't, I didn't have the pleasure to be in the interviews, but I hear very, very good things. She will be the new face of the city. She'll sit at the front counter, and she's starting with us on Monday as Taylor prepares to move to Texas. And the other is the, the city's recent decision to move from a part-time to a full-time fire chief position. And this position is currently posted with applications being accepted through tomorrow. So those are two noteworthy changes to the structural tree of the organization. With regard to wages and benefit, we're going to see a 5.1 cost of living wage increase, which is recommended for all non-union, full-time, and part-time employees. And as we always do, and we have a policy for, that wage increase is based on the 2021 inflation rate, which, when we did this, was 5.1. I think it's quite higher now than, than that. So it's, it's still a healthy raise, and it will have an impact. Union employees will receive a 2% wage increase, which is pursuant to their collective bargaining. So they were locked in at that rate when, when they signed the agreement. Some employees will also receive step increases according to their date of hire. Employee healthcare premium amounts, which are established by the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool, are projected to increase by only 1.9%. That's the same amount as last year. The city has greatly benefited from being a part of that pool, where we were seeing double-digit increases in healthcare premiums when we were on our own. So we, while it increases, it increases at a much lower rate than if we were looking for insurance policies on our own. We will remain within the state-imposed hard cap limits for our healthcare costs, and therefore required employees will continue to pay 18% towards their healthcare premiums. That's 2% lower than what the state says is the cap at 20%. So a nice benefit for the employees. Retirement plan contribution percentages, dental coverage, and vision coverage will all remain unchanged. And finally, the city's merged contributions for all defined benefit plan retirees are expected to increase to, by another $6,600 a year. The city will voluntarily be contributing an additional $17,000 a year to accelerate our funding percentages to a more favorable position with our obsolete employee pension liability. So this is a program that we don't have anymore. We don't have a defined benefit. We have a defined contribution plan now, but we still have several retirees that are on this plan, and we need to fund it. We continue to be fortunate of not having to struggle with excessive unfunded liabilities and post-employment benefits that, that many other communities do struggle with. So finally, this last graph just merely illustrates, I think it's good to see a, a reflection of what the people cost in the, in the scheme of the budget. Our payroll and benefit costs, as they relate to our total budget, is, is 18%. And that's very comparable, if not much lower than, than where you find payroll benefit costs for municipal government. So in closing, this proposed budget is structured to meet our key focus areas, objectives, and tasks from our new strategic plan. We, as city leadership, continue our efforts to increase revenues and, and improve efficiencies in service and generally make all funds more self-sustaining across the board. As always, I want to acknowledge and thank all of the employees who aided in the preparation of this budget, especially Finance Director Garcia and her entire team, who spent a lot of hours helping prepare this budget and the presentation. As a staff in our entirety, we continue to make efforts to increase revenues and reduce expenditures and improve operations throughout the city in order to be more efficient and effective in our service to the public. And so this budget is just a reflection of the tremendous amount of dedication, commitment, service, and our effort that our employees give each day. So I want to acknowledge and thank them as well. So that is it. I'm happy to take any questions. There is a motion that will reflect the resolution for adoption of the 2022-2023 budget.
Do we make a motion before we discuss anything?
Doesn't matter. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve, just make sure I'm on the right one here, sorry. Motion to approve ordinance number 22-328, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023, approving millage levies, and other matters related thereto.
Second motion.
It's been moved and supported. The only discussion point I have is that the millage is The only discussion point I have is that the millage is one-one point two-
Eleven point two-three oh three.
Three oh three. How many years has that been?
I think it's 2006, and it was reduced to that amount. We'd made, at one point, I think in the early 2000s, it was at thirteen, and it'd come down to eleven point two-three oh three, and it's stayed there since.
So that millage rate has served the community
Yes.
almost spot on, as near as I can tell, other than a few hiccups along the way and during the recession. But it's been a good millage?
Yeah, and I think that's a reflection of, you know, certainly costs and services, to provide services has increased since 2006, yet we're able to maintain the same rate because property tax growth has occurred. So as growth occurs, it allows us to collect more money at the same rate and provide those services that now cost more than they did in 2006.
As a general comment, I hear less commentary from the public on our millage and taxes currently than I have in the past. I think there's more of an acceptance in the community at large that we are doing the right thing with the millage. That's at least my observation. I don't know about you, Larry, or Dan. I rarely hear anybody talk to me about our taxes being out of line and not getting their money's worth.
I can count on, in the last eight years, one or two conversations.
So you're doing a great job, Patrick, and the staff, no doubt.
Well, we have a survey coming back, too.
Yeah, that's gonna be interesting to see the survey.
Yeah, we'll be interested to see how the community, that'll be reflected in that survey.
Any other discussion for Patrick on the budget?
I have one question, and I don't know if this is for you or members of the Personnel Committee. I was hoping you could summarize the conversation that led to the recommendation for the full-time fire chief.
Yeah, sure. And I might invite Andrea to come up here, too, because Andrea did a lot of digging into the various options of that analysis. And I think, why don't you summarize? But we had basically three different scenarios that we looked at, shared with the-
Well, maybe we can, can we pull up the Personnel Committee minutes real quick?
Yes, we had three different scenarios that we looked at. We looked at keeping up with what we had currently been doing, which was part-time fire chief position. We looked at hiring a full-time either fire officer of some sort, and then keeping the part-time fire chief, and then we looked at hiring a full-time fire chief. There was discussion about some needs in the community that weren't being met under the previous part-time fire chief model. And a lot of those were going to, were items we had to catch up on, and it wasn't just a catch-up on it.
I'm gonna speak frankly. I think we can say we were grossly underserving the community with only, I think, two inspections in the last year.
Yeah, we've been really behind on fire inspections. So that really kind of led us to go, where do we need in terms of, one of the other big ticket items was, we weren't really providing enough time to apply for grants either. So a lot of the cost coming out of that department, we weren't trying to offset in any sort of way.
Some missed opportunities, probably a fair way to say that.
So we kind of narrowed down to the two full-time options. To do the full-time fire chief is actually a little bit cheaper than to have a full-time officer as well as a part-time chief. But we also thought it was good representation for the city for that full-time individual to be the face of the department, not just for city residents, but also for communication within the, within the city personnel, too, and availability for that person to be there, so.
I'll say, too, that you interviewed kind of an across-the-board analysis of what the norm is, and we were in the far minority in terms of still having a fully part-time paid on-call department. So most departments have caught up with the amount of sophistication that those departments deal with today is different than it was twenty years ago. And it's necessary to have at least a full-time person there to handle that day-to-day.
There are some training items, too. The state has updated their training requirements. And with those training requirements, it's been, it's a lot of time spent on that. But you also have to have certain, you have to have certain training to provide certain training. And so we were lacking on some of those items, too.
Will we also be required, then, to purchase an additional vehicle or upgrade the current one for a full-time position?
We have a vehicle already that's assigned to the chief, so there's no need for additional vehicles. I mean, that vehicle probably needs to be replaced at some point, but we do not necessitate an additional piece of equipment.
Two of them did an outstanding job presenting us the pros and cons of all three choices, all three options, actually. And in the end, it was really a no-brainer in going this route. I mean, it really made sense on every level.
I fully trust the Personnel Committee. I just wanted, I just wanted some clarification. I just wanted the information, so.
Well, the big one is, I think we're missing out on some grants.
Well, that resonated with me.
That was a jaw drop for me.
That resonated with me, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the budget? Hearing none, there is a motion on the table. I'll call for the roll.
Commissioner DeBrey?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, thank you, Patrick Waterman and the city staff, for another fine year and presentation of the budget. We will now be moving on to fee schedule. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the 2022-2023 fee schedule as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. I looked at this, Patrick, but quite frankly, I didn't really see anything that jumped out at me.
Yeah, it's caused, there's some cost recovery fee adjustments for Dave's department for traffic control services. And I think the big one was a lot of the planning fees didn't include cost recovery for engineering. So that was added in. And I think the other smart change was they changed the rates for equipment to just reflect the MDOT current rate, so that we're not having to continuously change the rate to reflect the equipment rate. So pretty straightforward. Nothing earth-shattering that's gonna cause blowback in terms of why did the rates go up so much? It really was more of a streamlining effort.
I had a question. The fee for the fire chief went down. That surprised me. We're hiring a full-time individual.
Pull that one up. I'm not familiar. Andrea or Kayla, can either of you speak to that? From forty-seven, that's the per hour. Is that the new hourly rate, or?
It just seemed to, I want to understand why it went down.
Yeah.
Is that a mistake?
No, I believe we looked at the current rate plus FICA is what we did there. I couldn't, we tried to figure out what it was before, and it's hard to try to see how that number came about because we never had a good count as to how many hours that fire chief was actually doing. So now I actually have at least a concept or a theory behind it and a way to support that number, where I couldn't support the forty-seven point two.
So the previous number was over?
I think it was over. I mean, we're just adjusting it to the salary plus FICA, just to cost recover.
That's the proposed salary for the new
Correct.
fire chief.
We're just making things right.
That's good.
I'm impressed. Anything else in the fee schedule from the commissioners? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries Fountain of Honor nomination. Larry, I believe you wanted to make this motion.
Yes, my honor to make this motion to accept the nomination to add Mr. Dave Bullheist to the Fountain of Honor. It is an honor. I've served with him and now his son.
I'll second.
It's a movement supported. Dan, do you have anything to add to that? I mean, you're probably closest to this.
Well, you know, as a little kid, I just always knew that he was involved with the city and has been, you know, for sixty years, you know? And in fact, that's, there became an opening on the commission, and because of his service to the city, it led me to want to run as well and, you know, serve the city as well. Some, his letter of resignation to you, Patrick, some of that I, you know, but again, as a little kid, but I didn't even know myself, and I was just like, wow, really? It was impressive, you know? And so when I think about him, not just because he's my dad, but for what this recognition is all about, he's more than deserving.
Yep, and I had a chance, I ran into him at the Memorial Day ceremony, and he didn't even know. So I said, I better give him a heads up. So I went up to him, shook his hand and said, hey, we are planning on nominating you. And I think he was very happy.
Yeah.
And so that was cool. That was a cool moment. But yeah, well, the thought was we'd combine these with Gary's, and we'll get plenty of notice out, but sometime this summer or late summer, we'll plan a gathering at the fountain, and we'll put both of their plaques on the rock there.
Oh, very deserving.
Yeah.
Very cool. It's truly a legacy for Dave and also for all those on there. Motion's on the table. Any other discussion? And Dan, you're gonna talk to your dad, I'm sure, and let him know that it's now official?
Oh, yeah.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item sixteen, purchase and development agreement with Terra Square LLC is-
Terra Station LLC.
Terra Station, sorry, LLC. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash one-seven-four-one, approving and authorizing the execution of a purchase and development agreement between the city of Hudsonville and Terra Station LLC. Support.
It's been moved and supported. City Attorney, do you have any other comments on this, or where?
No, I do not.
You do not? Patrick?
No. I think it's a great project, and we're excited to move forward.
I think we're all in full agreement and understand what this means to the city. Any discussion or questions from the commissioners? Very well, I'll call for the roll.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, City Attorney and City Manager, for your due diligence and professionalism and dedication to our city. And we are all very excited. Moving on to item seventeen, is there a motion to approve the mayor's appointments to boards? You're right, I'm going off with the old one. Item number seventeen, MDOT grant application for Berry Street. Yeah, this was added in late. I'm going off on an old agenda. It was sent, water main, resurface and water main work is our motion.
I make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash seventeen forty-two, confirming the city's application and required matching funds for paving, for repaving and water main work on Berry Street from Twenty-second Avenue to Thirty-second Avenue.
Support.
Yeah, this was slid in late after the first draft. And Bob had done a lot of the work on this. I don't know, Patrick, you wanna summarize that?
Yeah, this is, in simplest form, this is a no-brainer, as much as they come, because we were planning in the upcoming budget to resurface and do some water main work on Berry Street. Can you put that graphic up, Jill? We're planning on and have budgeted to do some water main and resurfacing, basically from the east city limits, which are depicted in that brown area, the brown line where it says Berry. We have budgeted amounts for that. And then at the eleventh hour, we kind of learned about this new MDOT category B grant, which we applied for, and that will allow us to receive an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which basically will allow us to repave the whole road, all of Berry, from east city limits to where the realignment will happen. And the kicker is that our costs, because of the amount, are not going to go up, at least not anything significantly. Worst-case scenario, it'd be a difference of thirty thousand. But we're thinking that, we're hoping that by bidding this project in its entirety, we're gonna see some savings, and that savings will negate any difference. So our match amount, the engineering, all of that's already in the budget that you just approved. This grant, if we get it, will allow us to do the rest of the road, which it needs it. And if you looked at the application, there's pictures of that road. It gets worse as you go east, but it'd be nice to have all newly surfaced pavement when we're doing the Berry Street realignment. So I think that'll be a really nice improvement for the community.
How did Bob come across this?
It was, MDOT does a good job of getting out notice of their grant opportunities. So Bob and Don DeBrey's talked, and we encouraged them to, Don, to apply for it, which he did.
Is this a competitive grant? Is there a good chance we can get this?
I think we have a very good chance, because it's, whenever you combine street work with under-street work, your point scores go up. So they look at that like, okay, they're using money wisely, because they're replacing water main and they're doing street work. So I think our chances are good. I don't know how competitive it's gonna be. And I don't know when we're gonna know. I don't think it's too long, but the construction would still happen next year.
It'd be exciting.
Yeah.
Well, well done to Bob and the staff, once again, for their due diligence and thinking of the city's streets. We need the work. Any other questions on this motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, moving on to item eighteen, motion to approve mayor's appointments. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the mayor's appointments to boards and commissions as listed. Support.
It's been moved and supported. There's a couple of names there that are probably new to several of us. Evan Groot is the son of Jack. I know Evan. He is a financial auditor for the state of Michigan. He is very, very wise about money and finances, and we are privileged that he is gonna step up to fill that role as an Act One-Ninety-eight committee, which only meets, gosh, every two, three years, maybe? Not very often, but it's important that we have somebody well-qualified in that seat if we need it. The other new name on there is Nathan Hanson. Here again, he's a friend of mine, somebody I've known maybe for a couple of years. He owns a mental health firm, very involved in the community. He's always asking Jack and I questions about the city, what's going on and how it's run. And he's the kind of person that we just need, professional kind of person that's gonna be objective when it comes to our compensation. The other names there in the planning commission, I approach all those planning commissioners. They are all very dedicated, like being in the planning commission, really enjoy it. And they all have indicated they have no desire to lead the planning commission. So it's kind of nice to have that kind of steady leadership in the planning commission. They're all highly qualified and take a lot of ownership, and they do their homework. I don't think there's anything other names there that are surprising anybody. Don Bondosler, as we all know, has been the mayor, and he likes being on the library board, too, so. Any questions on the mayor's appointments? For the record, I rely on the department heads to seek people out for these and to come to me with names. And I think we're gonna maybe chart out that process a little bit more formally with Andrea, with HR here now. But that's kind of the process we've been using. Rely on the department heads to come to us with some suggestions. Typically, people we know, but they're probably just a little bit more knowledgeable. Any questions on that? And you're still in the DDA, correct, Jack? That's right. And you're on the planning commission, Larry, right?
Yes, sir.
And we value that immensely. Any other questions on that? Hearing none, I will call for a roll on this.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Mayor North-
Yes, thank you. Motion- Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, I'm sure that you'll advise those members for those boards, Patrick, somehow. Thank you, Jill. I know that, it's, it's always a hassle. We always get through it, don't we? Thank you very much. Um, before we adjourn, we'll just go down the dais. Ashley, anything to add tonight? You're kind of the quiet one over there in the corner. You have nothing to say?
I'm learning.
You're learning. No, you're good study. Thank you. Dobie?
Just, Patrick, thanks for the, uh, work on the budget. Kayla, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
City Attorney? Patrick?
I don't think so. Don't have anything coming up training-wise, right?
And I did get pictures from the fishing trip, finally, so. They were very nice.
Fish could have been bigger, but it's all good. Thanks.
Larry?
Other than, I was a wrackle, what, what do we sit on the budget? It's come a long
Dan?
Yeah, just one thing. Um, the sign looks great. Um, and I've been at the last two concerts. Very well-attended. I don't know if that sign has, um, added to the draw. I kind of hope it does. Um, if I could make a request, uh, I don't think I can really request, um, common sense for parents, but, uh, two weeks ago, uh, the kids were playing soccer right by the, right by 32nd. And one time I had to run into the street to get the ball. It went out there two other times. Um, so I don't know-
During the con, during the concert?
Yes. And, you know, seriously, cars slamming on their brakes. And, uh, not because a kid ran out there, because a ball went out there and they thought maybe a kid might run out there. But I don't know if there's a way that, you know, maybe we could encourage, um, you know, before the concert starts or periodically throughout, just encourage kids to play more on the, uh, the south end, um, and not along 32nd, because that was just an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk that over with, uh, the event team and see-
I mean, to me, parents say, just-
I know.
Move over here. But at one time, I went up and stood by the sidewalk to stop the ball from, because, I mean, there were 15, 20 kids that were all kicking it around and-
Yeah, yeah.
Is Dave involved there at all in that night?
Dave Dahl? Yes, his team is there doing traffic control, so that makes-
They could have them do it, but just to walk once in a while?
Yeah, yeah.
But just, um, intercom, just say, you know, if we'd have all the kids playing over here.
Away from the, yeah, busy road.
Yeah.
Jack?
Um, nothing particular for me. I'd just like to say thank you to the mayor for your leadership and continued cheerleading.
Just a guy like you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kayla? Jill?
Um, I will be gone next week, FYI, um, attending the clerks conference. So I will be doing payroll the week after, if you need a sheet.
Okay.
And also, if you do not have a silver name tag, please let me know.
I don't have a silver name tag.
And are we gonna get shirts?
Why is everybody looking at me? Am I in charge of this project?
Yep, yeah. Shirt man.
Okay.
I will drop it.
I'll make sure you get shirts. How was that?
Sergeant, you got anything? Andrea?
Um, I have recently distributed benefits bullets to all of our staff members. Um, and I'll run back to my office and make sure they get one for you.
Yeah, put them in our boxes. Just put them in our boxes. That's fine. Very well. Uh, before I ask for motion adjourned, I'd like to thank the staff for, once again, a fine Memorial Day celebration service. Um, as you know, that's a pretty emotional event for me. It's one I do. And I appreciate all the support I got from your staff. And Jack did a fine job cooking the meal. And Larry, you were there. Appreciate your comments too. So, um, it's a well-attended event and it's, it's important. At least it's for me.
Enjoyed your speaker's share.
And with that, uh, if anybody else has something to say, say it now because I'm asking for a motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.